Good evening. I'll get this up here and get in trouble. I'd like to welcome everybody to the April 24th meeting of the St. Mary's County Planning Commission. There are two sign-up sheets in the foyer for our hearing. One is a sign-up sheet of your speaking this evening. The other is a sign-in sheet for attendees of this hearing. In case any further information needs to be sent to you regarding the cases, please sign in on one of these sheets. Our meeting is being recorded for the public record. Any comments made by anyone present must be recorded as part of the record. Therefore, if you have anything to say, please come up to one of the microphones provided. Your comments cannot be recorded. Okay. Amy, can you turn it up a little bit?
I'll try.
Thank you, ma'am. You give me a...
Ma'am, but I cannot hear him.
Well, I'll put her up here. Your comments...
Little seat right here.
Yeah, there you go. Put him all on up here and you can hear this thing. Your comments cannot be recorded and placed in the record unless they are directed to a microphone. Is that better, sir? Can you hear that?
Yes, sir.
You want to come up here and sit... Would you like to come up here and sit at that desk to be closer? Not the middle desk, not the middle desk, but the one over here.
You can't hear really.
Just come up... No, you'll have to sit at that desk over there, sir.
Over there?
Yes, sir.
He is hard-hearing also.
Okay.
Well, then he needs to come up here by me because I am too.
Pull this chair, pull that chair between you two if you want.
There you go. Give him one now.
I have a hard time hearing right here. What'd you say?
Always, always wants, always won in the crowd.
Yeah. I thought I was the only one.
Okay, let's get back on track. Your comments cannot be recorded and placed in the record unless they are directed to a microphone. You are to direct your statements, questions, or responses to the board only, and we will direct them to the appropriate person for an answer. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone testifying or asking questions during our public hearings will be required to take an oath. I'd like to thank you for your cooperation, and please put your cell phones on either silent or vibrate now. Okay, on our agenda this evening, after a review and approval of the April 17th meeting, our first meeting, our first public hearing this evening will be for CSP 22-0252 for their O'Reilly Auto Parts of Lexington Park. Owner is Commercial Parcel D LLC, and their action requested for that is a review of a concept site plan for a 7,135 square-foot auto parts store. Following that, our second public hearing this evening is for a concept site plan number CSP 23-0018 for the 235 Farm and Outdoor Sports. Their owner is 231 Materials and Recycling Products, LL, and their action requested is a review of a concept site plan for a change of use of an existing 2,156 square-foot building to retail sales of trailer, tractors, ATVs, and et cetera, and establishment of an outdoor display. Following that, any new business, and following that will be adjournment. Let's see, with us this evening, I'll let the board members, starting with Mr. Brown, introduce themselves.
John Brown.
Kim Summers.
Patty Robrick.
Howard Thompson.
Joe Van Kirk.
Joe St. Clair.
Merle Evans.
Also with us this evening, from the county, from the Department of Land Use and Growth Management, we have Brandy Glenn as our planner, Mr. Larry Eberhard also is our planner, and Jessica Birch is our senior administrative coordinator. Also, we have, from the county attorney's office, the assistant county attorney, Mr. John Hauser, from the Department of Public Works and Transportation, their director, Mr. Jim Gotch, from the St. Mary's County Metropolitan Commission, we have Anna Wells, from the Patuxent River Naval Air Station Planning Liaison's office, Mr. Alec Young, from the Department of Economic Development, Casey Guidry, and the most important is our video media producer, Ms. Amy Carter. Okay, did everybody have a chance to review those April 17th minutes? Is there any corrections? Do I have a motion to accept?
Still moved.
I have a motion by Mr. St. Clair.
Second.
And I have a second by Mr. Brown. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Moving right along. Okay, in the first case this evening, anybody that's going to be testifying with that or have anything to say, and anybody from staff, if you would stand at this time, and I'll get you sworn in. Okay. Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you. Brandy.
Actually, I wasn't going to do the staff report. I think Haley has something.
Okay. Would the applicant like to come up at this time, or the representative for the applicant?
Hi there, this is Haley Carpenter, Butler Engineering, 16701 Melford Boulevard.
You can sit over here.
Speaking, oh yeah, and speak into that microphone.
Brandy, would it be possible to go through the staff report today to start the process and then come back to the comment?
Speak into the microphone. I want to make sure these gentlemen can hear what's happening.
Do you want me to go through the staff report?
Do you have a request? Are we going to be continuing this? Let me ask that right up.
So, it is my understanding that DPWT, there's a couple comments outstanding that we are working together to address, as well as a fee that needs to be paid by the applicant. But the design items presented on the site plan and in the staff report are generally going to be unchanged, so I'll leave it up to...
All right, well, I'll leave that up to the board. The applicant's not quite ready, doesn't have everything in line to do this.
They can request a continuance.
Okay. Okay, and what date would we use for that, Brandy?
May 22nd.
May...
22nd.
It's not just you, Mr. Clements, I couldn't hear either, so we're good to go. All right, May 22nd, we have...
May 22nd.
Going to continue to...
What'd you say, ma'am?
May 22nd.
This is for, this is for the O'Reilly...
Can't hear.
This is for the O'Reilly Auto Parts, Mr. Clements.
Mr. Thompson, the only thing I have to say this afternoon, I'm just concerned about water runoff when they expand their footprint they got there for the whole concept plan they want to do.
Okay, I think you're here for the second, second group though, aren't you?
Talking about the O'Reilly's case or...
You're talking about the, you're talking about the 235?
Yeah.
He's for the other, this, this one's for the one in Lexington Park. You're here for the one that, that's up by Hollywood.
In Lexington Park? This is for the case in Lexington Park?
Okay, call me when you're ready for it. My job took my hearing away from it.
And we thank you for doing that job. Okay, so, May 22nd, we'll be coming back for that. Is there any discussion from the board? Do I have a motion to continue this to May 22nd?
Motion to continue to May 22nd.
I have a motion by Mr. St. Clair. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Summers. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anybody opposed? Okay, that written down. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We'll see you then. All right, there you go, I like these, I like it like that. Okay, moving right along, our second hearing this evening is for the 235 Farm and Outdoor We've had, if anybody's going to be testifying at that, if you would stand at this time, and I'll get you sworn in. Staff, you've already, I already swore at you, you're good to go.
I'll say reset.
You're still under oath. Okay, okay. Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, staff, are we moving forward with this one?
Yes.
Okay, let's roll.
Good evening. I'm trying to speak clearly in this microphone. Agenda item one is concept site plan CSP 23-0018 for the, for the 235 Farm and Outdoor Sports. The concept site plan seeks approval for a change of use of an existing 2,156 square-foot building...
Can I interject? Mr. Clements and them are still having difficulty hearing. If they could move back so they could read the screen?
I've turned my screen so they can see it.
Oh, okay.
Good.
I don't know if the other gentleman can see it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Oops, I guess I turned it off.
Are we situated now?
Okay, all right.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so I'm going to read that again.
Please.
The concept site plan seeks approval for change of use of an existing 2,156 square-foot building to retail sales of tractor, trailer, of trailer, tractors, ATVs, and establishment of an outdoor display. The site is located at 232-003 Notch Road. The land use is mixed-use medium intensity. The zoning is medium-intensity mixed-use with an AE4 overlay. The use is allowed in and development regulations for development in the medium-intensity mixed-use zoning district are intended to create large-scale and clustered commercial and residential uses adjacent to existing or planned principal transportation corridors. Mixed-use non-residential developments and mixed-use developments of residential and non-residential uses are possible. Per the comprehensive plan, primary growth centers are Lexington Park and Linnertown. Urban and pattern-in-form, designed for intensive residential, commercial, and industrial development, supported by provision of community facilities and services. Use type 75 retail sales or service vehicles. Establishments engaged in the retail sale of new or used vehicles of all types, cars, trucks, recreational vehicles, motorcycles, ATV, bicycles, boats, watercraft, outdoor, outboard motors. They may have showrooms or open lots for selling vehicles, may provide repair and maintenance services, and may sell related parts, accessories, and equipment. The public notice for the Planning Commission public hearing was published in Southern Maryland News on April 7th and April 14th. The property has been posted in accordance with CZO requirement section 21.3.3. Certified mail receipts have been received and have been entered into the record of this public hearing as exhibit one. The agenda was posted on the website on April 18th. The concept site plan was distributed for review by the TEC agencies on January 11th, The use of retail sales or service vehicles is a permitted use in the medium-intensity mixed-use zoning district. For all non-residential and multifamily residential projects that require major site plan approval, a concept site plan shall first be approved by the Planning Commission before the major site plan may be processed for approval by the Planning Director. This is a public hearing which enables all who wish to provide information to the Planning Commission. In order to approve the concept site plan, the Planning Commission shall make the findings that the proposed development is consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable functional plans, may be served by adequate public facilities as required by section 70.2.2, will promote the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. Adequately developed recreational and other community amenities are provided in accordance with the comprehensive plan and the comprehensive zoning ordinance, is consistent with chapter 62 design objectives. There are two outstanding issues that kind of go hand in hand. The applicant must obtain a waiver from Metcom for water and sewer, as well as Metcom's concept site plan approval. This concludes the staff report and is entered into the record of this public hearing as exhibit two. Joe Kuduski is here representing the applicant. Are there any questions for me?
Have any questions for staff at this time?
I've got a question.
Sure.
It relates to your outstanding issues. I read the TEC input from Metcom, and they've got check block if necessary, no.
Correct.
So what we're saying is we're going to be acting on something that hasn't been completely staffed?
Right, that's an outstanding issue. They, they don't have concept approval from Metcom.
Anything from staff? We'll be able to question Metcom on that if you'd like, Mr. Brown.
Right, Anna Wells is here from Metcom, and she can...
Okay. While we're talking about it, how you doing, Anna? You just well, you just well come on up here and address this issue?
Yep, so I'm Anna Wells with Metcom. So because of the service category that this property is in, a waiver is required if they don't plan to connect to public water and sewer. This has been relayed to the applicant and the engineer. We haven't received the waiver yet, and it should also be noted that because the property is within 200 feet of both water and sewer, Metcom will most likely deny this waiver, and then they will have to connect to the water and sewer. So that's kind of the process that's going on.
So they don't want to connect, is that...
I don't want to speak for them, but we don't have a waiver yet to defer the connection, and we don't have plans for a connection.
So currently, it is on well and septic, or is it hooked to...
I believe there is a well and septic there, I don't know the status of it.
We'll save that for the applicant.
Oh, okay.
I think he's ready to answer all that good stuff up.
Okay.
Any other questions from Metcom? Okay.
Thank you.
And who is representing the applicant this evening? Name and business address, sir?
Yes, sir, good evening. My name is Joe Kuduski with COA Barrett LLC, the civil engineer, representing the applicant. Also, the applicant, Ms. Erin Kimbrough is here to speak as well. I guess I'll just address the, the outstanding item regarding Metcom. We do want to submit for a deferral for a one-year connection to public water and sewer. The site is currently served by a adequate well and septic system, private well and septic system. We have not submitted a deferral, mainly because we've been told that it's going to be denied. With that, if it is uncertainly denied, we will provide design plans to connect to public water and sewer as part of the major site plan process. Maybe Anna can come back up and just say that that would be acceptable. So I guess what I'd like to say is not an issue at the concept level. If the deferral is denied, we will provide plans to tie to public water and sewer.
So the first applicant was more or less the same thing, and we told them to go home and get your, get your work done?
So the first applicant, right, does not, did not have concept site plan approval from DPW or the APF form. This applicant does not have concept site plan approval from Metcom because they need a waiver.
Okay.
The, and again, Anna can correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is the waiver will likely be denied by Metcom, which means Lugum has to deny the waiver, right? When that happens, they'll have to connect. Once they, once they acknowledge that they're going to connect, then Metcom will be able to give concept site plan approval. But right, right now, they don't have it.
We have heard from Metcom. How does everybody feel about moving forward with this? Any opinions here? I need four good ones.
I mean, I don't see why they're asking for a waiver if they're pretty sure it's going to be denied.
Can I ask the applicant? Why are you, if you know it's going to be denied, why are you going to try for the waiver?
Well, that's exactly right, so, but it was kind of point to us that we had to go through the process. But if it's, that's the case, and we'll revise, you know, we'll include the connection as part of the major site plan process.
All right, so what you're telling us, if we make this a condition, we can go ahead and move forward tonight?
Yes, sir.
Everybody all right with that?
Yeah, I guess.
The last applicant couldn't do it. They have a couple of issues before they could get there. We just...
Historically, we try to be...
Microphone.
I'm sorry, historically, we try to work through these things, but they're sort of a process. You know, we, you know, we, we have a process. And so when you, when, when applicants come before us, I say this in the kindest sort of way, inadequately prepared, in my view, you know, to move forward, I have a problem with it. I mean, it's, you might, you might think that this is not an important part, but for us it is, for me it is. I mean, you, you, we can make it a condition if we, if we chose. I'm not crazy about moving forward, just having it made as a condition, but that's just my, I'm one of seven.
If I could...
I personally, I don't want to set a precedent of someone, of everyone coming in and doing the same thing. If Metcom was going to deny you, you knew it, you should at least brought it forward.
Yeah, I guess we were working up, you know, to our best ability with the time allowed to try to get a deferral. Certainly, the, you know, a little background history on this, the parcel was used commercially since 2017 with various lease agreements. When we first made the application, we made it as a minor site plan for a change of use from one commercial use to another. We were, and that was after the applicant purchased the property. The, then working through Lugum, they found no, that none of the commercials established were established legally. So they all operated in 2017 illegally, unbeknownst to my client. So if it were to be a minor site plan, connection to public water sewer would not be required. We would go straight to a minor site plan, we wouldn't become before this board. So, you know, economically, client's been hit kind of twofold in that now she's have to go on through this major site plan process, been delayed, you know, she would have liked to have been open by now, quite honestly, and I think she has staff ready to fill the, fill the building. But we're trying to do it correctly through this major site plan process. And again, we were working up to try to get to defer of at least a year to get the business up and running from having to pay and do not only the construction to tie to water and sewer, but pay the tap fees, et cetera. But with conversations with Metcom and with Lugum, it's understood that it's really null and void. So, and I think Anna could come up and basically say that with the understanding that we will be tying to public water and sewer, Metcom can approve the concept plan. That's just a background story, I'm sorry, we're not in your mind prepared for the hearing tonight. I would like to move forward. We also have a board of appeals case next month for variance to the buffers that don't exist. And again, we're just trying to get the business open, you know, in St. Mary's County, she's got a successful business across the bridge in Calver County, she wants to expand that into St. Mary's. Thank you.
And I'm not trying to get in your way. I, I'd like to see these properties repurposed. It's just that there seems to me to be a process. And I understand, you know, I said earlier, you know, in business, meter runs all the time, it just does. But again, I can't send someone, one person home because they're unprepared, and then turn around and have another person unprepared and not do that, so, but that's, again, that's just my...
Mr. Van Kirk, how you feel?
Is that the only, would Metcom approve the concept plan approval if we made it a condition to ensure that they hook to public water and sewer? Is it, was that the only issue?
Yeah, we would just change the TEC, revise the TEC plan to say we need water and sewer plants.
But I mean, that was the only issue, was the fact that they were going to ask for a waiver versus already saying they're going to hook to water and sewer?
Correct, the waiver was required since they weren't connecting.
Okay, I, on that issue, I wouldn't have a problem moving forward. You know, there's a lot of cases, like, and I understand what Mr. Evans is saying, there's a lot of cases where we don't have certain things, like sometimes on state highway, and there's nobody here to answer, that there could be one issue, could be 10 issues. So on this particular case, and I'm not trying to set a precedence either, but I would think that this would be, now also, if we get to the plan, I want to ask the, I guess, Ms. Glenn and the applicant about the, about the buffer yards. So was it previously out of compliance since it was commercial and it's going to be commercial now?
It, it was never legally commercial. It was a residence as far as we're concerned, and it's being converted to commercial. But I do want to address one thing really quickly. If this was a minor site plan, it would still be required to go through the waiver process, which would still be denied, and it would still have to connect.
But...
But, but that's a...
Is the issue of the buffer yard just because it was, to Lugum's knowledge, just a house?
Correct.
Was a residence?
Correct, and now that it's, it's becoming commercial, these buffer yards are required. And, this is Larry's project, but if I remember correctly, the side buffer yard that's required, well, it simply can't be done because there's a structure in the way.
Right, what, I see what's required. What do they actually have there? I looked at the plans, but it's hard to, it looks like, are they not far off in the front? I mean, they're behind the 50-foot BRL, it looked like, and there's, looked like 65 feet required.
Oh, yeah.
So they're 55 or so feet from the front, or 60 feet or...
Right, so they need a 65 foot in the front?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, then a type C on the west side, and a half of a C on, on the rear.
Right, and that's because that's vacant.
But all three of them can't be met. Is that, I mean, we're not the ones deciding, I'm just asking the question.
Sure, certainly. We meet the rear buffer yard. We've provided a 15-foot wide side buffer yard was the max that we could provide, and we provided a portion of the 65-foot buffer yard along 235 where it's currently lawn area.
Right.
The rest of it, where we couldn't provide, and we're asking the variance for is parking, so the existing gravel and paved parking area is within that 65-foot buffer.
Okay.
And then it actually does include, include a front, a small portion of the front of the structure.
Okay.
So the structure's about 50 feet.
So are you going before the board of appeals to ask for the variance?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you're doing?
Yes, sir.
For me, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm okay proceeding, my, just myself, you know.
Let's get that question...
I think the process was to come to Planning Commission first, and then Board of Appeals.
That happened, that happened.
That's how it's done. I was just curious about that.
The location map gives you a good idea of what's there now.
Is this plan included in your report, staff report, the color drawn? Yeah, okay.
Ms. Robrick, how do you feel about moving forward?
I do agree with Joe in that, I think, I do agree that we need to be consistent, and we need to, particularly with our processes and how we treat other applicants.
Which Joe? Just Joe, that Joe?
That Joe.
There's two of them.
Mr. St. Clair. She's talking about Mr. St. Clair. Okay, Ms. Summers?
I agree as well, I believe we need to be consistent.
Well, I, I'm very much unprecedented, and, and when I look at the TEC comment that said no, that was dated 30 January. So certainly there, you would have thought that there would have been action taken over the last two and a half months to pursue this question of a waiver, and it evidently has not been initiated yet, correct?
Well, we pursued it through channels and basically come to the conclusion that it was going to be denied, so it...
No piece of paper ever moved anywhere, did it?
We did not submit the formal water, the waiver application, that's correct.
Because if I understand from, from Lugum, it will still have to go through that process, correct?
Well, I've, no, because we basically won't submit the waiver and we'll tie to public water and sewer. and sewer.
To me, it looks like the...
Ms. Wells basically said with that...
The applicant is trying to skim the corner here when a conscientious development here, they could have had this thing well on the way, and we could have almost been on time.
Okay.
Certainly, if you can do it in the next couple of weeks on a continuation, you could have done it starting January 30th.
Okay. I did agree with Mr. Van Kirk. I felt that we could have moved forward. It's a little bit different than the last case that we just heard, but we'll have to go ahead, and the board wants to continue this.
Okay, so I have, and this is why, I'll explain why the other applicant didn't get May 1st, because the items that they need to get, they can't get by May 1st. But if Farm 235 is going to connect, and I'm guessing they just need to relay that to Metcom, and Metcom just needs to change no to yes, then they can get their concept approval, which is all they need from Metcom, by May 1st, which is next Monday. We could continue it to Monday, next Monday, and then you'd still get to the Board of Appeals by May 11th.
Come in next week.
Okay, does the sign need to be changed?
No.
No, because we're continuing.
No, because we're continuing. Nothing needs to be changed. We just need to agree to that date. You need to have whatever conversation you need to have with Metcom, and they need to change their concept approval from no to yes with the statement that they need water sewer construction drawings.
Right. Okay, and just to be, okay, that's fine. I would say you have a couple of people that might want to speak on the project as well.
Well, we have them. We have two gentlemen that want to speak this evening. It's up to the chairman as to, sometimes I do and sometimes I don't, but I think this time, sometimes I do. I know both gentlemen some real well, some well. I'd like to go ahead and let them say their piece this evening, just so that, you know, I feel that the next hearing, we'll be able to carry it forward. Who wants to speak? Mr. Henson, since you got the microphone right in front of you, did you have something you wanted to say this evening?
I did.
Or Mr. Clements? Okay. Could you give us...
I'm Bill Clements. I live at 2323-03-Nott's Road, California, Maryland. I have two lots behind the property that these people want to develop. My only concern there, when they fully enlarge their footprint, they bought the Henson's property, I'm concerned about water runoff that comes off State Highway 235, and it does come onto that. And they address some of that problem when they put the dentist office in as far as routing that water. Henson's property borders my son's property and my forestry property, and we poured a bunch of money in that, as you know, Mr. Thompson, and we're concerned about that. He just come off 12 years in Japan and landed at the damn Naval Academy. That's where they put him because he's under Nav Sea, not Nav Air, and it was just too far to drive, so he's footing a bill for two houses, so to speak. That's the only thing I'm concerned about. I wish him luck. I just don't want to see a junkyard there. I'd like to see a professional-looking building there if they're going to do that. I don't see them operating out of that old house, and you know how long that's been there.
Yes.
And I thought that they were going to rip it down and put up a decent office building to run this equipment building out of. I don't know if that's down the pike, but that's my only concern, is water runoff and the way the place will look. There ain't many of us left in Bidamille subdivision. There's about a handful of us left, and like I said, my property's in Macklind, Heart and Mary. I'm not worried about that when the time comes, so that's it. That's all I got to say, ma'am, sir.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? And Mr. Clements? Okay.
Do you have water runoff issues right now?
Some, yes, but I mean, I'm 75 years old. It's been like that since the merchants had it, and the other two people had the place, which we all know what happened to it. It went back to the owner. But if you expand the parking lot, whether it's bluestone or asphalt, you know, you just increase the water flow to that property. And the property right behind them, I think, is one acre, and then the property behind the dentist office is 88ths of an acre, and it's in the prints there somewhere. And...
Well, we'll be making sure that the applicant, that the applicant checks that out, and he'll be able to explain that to us when they come back next week.
What do you see?
He will ensure that the applicant addresses the water runoff problem.
Yeah. They did a good job with the dentist office. I don't know who the architect was on that, but they routed it some kind of way where it goes, but anyway.
If y'all can't make it back next week, make sure you can turn on Channel 95 or go to YouTube and watch this.
If you can't make it next week, go to Channel 95 or YouTube, and you can watch what goes on.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm well aware, I can do that. I can hear that because she hollers at me about turning it down, so...
Okay, well, that's all right. She won't holler at you if she knows something's happening. Mr. Henson, do you have anything you want to say?
Microphone on.
Yes, sir, it is. Could you give us your name and address, please?
You can hear?
Yes, sir, I can hear you fine.
I live at 24611 Lockesstone Road in Hollywood, Maryland, but my property borders Mr. Charlie's property, which is the property that's in question here, and borders Mr. Clements.
Okay.
And I own two acres there.
Yes, sir.
And since all this has started, Mr. Fowler has purchased my property also.
Okay.
And right now, I have a double-wide trailer on it. It is rental property. I've been paying $5,000 a year strictly because it's commercial, and I do not live in it. I cannot control what the tax people charge for taxes. In February, I did get a knock on my door, and it was Mr. Stelwell, who is with O'Brien Realty, and he said, "Do you want to sell your property in California?" I said, "Yes, I'm interested in selling." He told me who was interested in buying. I went to their place of business and drove around 231 Lawn Mowers and saw their operation over there, and it was quite an operation. And, you know, with lawnmowers, four-wheelers, box trailers, luggage trailers, pontoon boats and motors, trailers. And actually, I came back to Mr. Stelwell, and I told him, I said, "I'm interested in selling." And we went back and forth with Mr. Kurt Fowler, and I did sell it on the 29th of March. That's why, right now, it's probably still being shown that I still own it, but I did sell it to Mr. Fowler on the 29th of March, and he has the lot that borders 235, plus he has a lot behind it which borders Mr. Clements' property. And I'm just grateful to sell it because I'm 86 years old, and I'm just not able to afford to pay the taxes on this property. And Mr. Fowler moving in there, we've always had a problem out front. They made a turnoff lane up to Dr. Christie's Medical Building, but that's where it ends. The state highway, when they put the dual-lane highway in on 235, they bought 22 more feet in front of my property, as well as Mr. Clements', and it was supposed to be a turnoff lane and also sidewalks. We told them we didn't need sidewalks out in the country, so they didn't put in the sidewalks or the turnoff lane. At that time, I did not know that it was not going to happen because at that time, I was working in Waldorf. And when I went to them, they said, "Oh, it's too late. We can't do anything. It's already done." But I personally think that this turnoff lane, and I have no idea what is being presented to Mr. Fowler at this time, if they want him to put the turnoff lane in or not, but I feel it's a state highway is the one that should put it in because they're the ones that did not put it in to start with. They've owned this land for the past, I guess, 20 or 25 years. And so, but this seems to be a good, clean business for it. And I was, I don't know, I may be repeating some things that gentlemen up here said, or you all may have said. I'm sorry, I did not hear everything that was said.
It's okay. Thank you, Mr. Henson.
Huh?
Thank you, sir. He'll be able to answer about the road...
That's all I have to say.
Okay. He'll be able to answer about the road entry the next time they come? As I say, they're going to continue this hearing tonight. He'll be able to answer that question, and also, if you can watch it, if you can go sit in Mr. Clements' yard, because he's going to have it on real loud, and you can watch it outside the window while he's sitting inside. I'm glad he can't hear what I'm saying, but of course, Mr. Brown's going to take care of that.
Listen to it, right, Billy?
He does now.
Because I do not, I do not have this facility or this capability at my home.
Okay.
In Hollywood.
Well, thank you.
So I'll have to go over to Billy's house to listen.
There you go. There you go. He'd be glad to have you.
Everybody that owns property there will be on the mailing list because that's all part of the bridge approach. And some of these other people might not like the big picture of the driveways, and that's in ink from State Highway, both north and south, from Route 235, Route 4, to up at Woodland Acres there where the, I mean...
Wildwood?
Wildwood. Can't think. Where the new movie theater is and the stoplight there. They wanted to shut down the driveways and open the old right-of-way up that's behind us from a 30 to a 60-foot with all stormwater-type things to go in, and it would not protrude onto Route 4. That, we all hope, is not going to happen. That fell through the cracks with all the money they spent at the Potomac River Bridge.
Yeah. Okay.
But they should get all that information if they're on the mailing list.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clements. Okay. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Henson? All right, we're going to continue this to May 2nd.
May 1st.
May 1st.
Next Monday?
Is it May 1st or May 2nd?
May 1st.
May 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, they have to do a motion.
May 1st. Everybody put that on their calendars now.
Well, we need a motion. A motion.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion that we continue this case until...
Other one?
Yeah. May 1st.
And I'll regretfully say 2nd, since that's my birthday.
Well, you know...
Thank you. Okay.
We'll say happy birthday.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay. We'll see you all next week. Anything else of business? Motion to adjourn. Motion, okay. Got a motion from Mr. Evans, seconded by Ms. Roebuck. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.